September 30th, 2011. In reference to grant levies received from the Major League Baseball Association to be used for field maintenance, i.e. park improvements, non-care sets.
Mayor, Council, this item is authorized to place the $5,000 grant for the parks into the budget.
The motion to approve, seconded by Guillermo Madrid. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
No.
Item number 15 is approved.
We move on to item number four, public comments.
We do have speakers signed up for public comments. First speaker is Antonio Salinas. Mr. Salinas, you have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. This is the City of Socorro, City Council, from the qualified orders of the City of Socorro. We are hereby protesting the issuance of the $2.7 million Citizens of Socorro, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2011. We, the understeins, are not able to attend the public hearing due and do hereby request that the City Council of the City of Socorro deny the issuance of the certificates of obligation for the $2.7 million because of unethical questions surrounding how taxpayer revenue and certificates of obligation are being spent and the poor management of the city operational funds for maintaining conditions of the streets, roads, streetlights, and parks. Also, there is an ethical question on not only the amount of the interest that we pay, but where will the money come from to pay for the certificates of obligation?
Our next speaker is Pesuki Ramos. Is Ramos, you have three minutes?
Thank you. Mayor, Council members, I am truly disappointed to have found out what you're actually doing to District One, that you actually, as a council, would give the authority to a council member at large to use old discretionary funds that really pertain to District One to be spent as you all please to do. I think that that is very wrong. I don't think that none of you, any of you, well, look at me, please, where is the respect? And that's exactly what I'm talking about. No respect.
Miss Ramos, please.
Well, please, look at me as well, when I'm speaking.
Miss Ramos, please.
I'm asking you to respect me and look at me when I'm speaking to you. Such disrespect that you have, and you have proven it over and over, not only to us, the community, when we're speaking, but what you do to our own councilwoman from District One, spending her monies, and not just hers, but also the past mayor that was recalled, their money as well. She only has $400 left in her discretionary funds, when she should have had $10,000. Where is that money being spent? Where is the past mayor's money being spent? Why would you, Member at Large, be doing such a thing? It is unethical. I don't think none of you, not one of you, would approve for anybody else to spend your discretionary funds. They have their own district. She has her own district, and she should have the right to spend it as she pleases to do for her district, or training, et cetera. But time after time, we have gone through this, seen so much disrespect. We're tired of it. We have asked questions, and, and, yes, three minutes. I know we have to speak three minutes, and you cannot respond then. But what about after the three minutes? We never get a response to the questions I have asked you. I can never get a response from you. You just look at me, or might smirk at me with disrespect, and if I don't get answers from you, we are tired, as community, of seeing that we cannot get answers. As for the discretionary funds, I hope that somehow you will hear from somebody, whether it's here or out there, that you should have a conscience to do what is right and ethically right. As for the CO funds, I heard the gentlemen speak that they needed to be spent, and they were having to identify why they needed to be spent. I don't think so. I have not seen on the COs of 2001, some of those monies were meant for those preservation historical projects, but yet there's some streets that were paved with them. How can that be? So don't tell us that we're doing the right thing. There's internal audits that have been done, and recommendations show what they're all about.
Our next speaker is Ernest Gomez.
Mr. Gomez.
Mr. Gomez, you have three minutes. You have three minutes, sir.
At the last city council meeting that we had, you had some American constituents that you needed, and I'd like to point them out to you. You stated that you had these great enemies that were out to get you, to stop whatever the heck you were doing. Well, you know what? These enemies are called constituents, in case you didn't know that. And then you came up with the idea that, "Tranzas, we're no longer going to be able to, no more, tranzas. This is a new administration. This is what we're going to do. We're going to go forward. We're a progressive unit here together, and this is what we're going to do." Well, let me tell you, I'd be embarrassed if I was in past administrations, because they were not tranteros, as the way you spoke and the way you spoke about them. They were good people who were trying to do the best they could for the city of Socorro. So I think, really, honestly, I think you owe them an apology. One of the things that you talk about is tranteros, or a tranza. You don't know what a tranza is, because, but let me tell you what some are. One, when you get rid of a director for the community center, and fire him, and create a position for the ex-mayor, and double the salary, that's a tranza.
Mr. Gomez, you were warned before that direct personal attacks on employees...
I'm sorry, this is not, this is fact. Is this not fact?
Mr. Gomez, you're now a member of the council. Mr. Gomez, please step outside.
That's a tranza.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Again, again, Mr. Gomez, I understand that this is your brother.
No, this is my...
I understand, but we won't have positive discourse. We don't find discourse, but discourse has to happen without personal attack.
He was just stating facts, he was not personal. You took a personal...
Ms. Reyes, I know he is your brother, but...
It does not matter, the fact that he is stating personal facts, it shouldn't bother you. What he is saying is stating facts.
None of his facts.
You did not mean your name? You did not mean your name?
But, well, we're taking away from the public comment, Ms. Reyes, so if we can call the next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. Raul Duran. Mr. Duran, you have three minutes.
First of all, before I begin, before I get to the rules, I'd like to continue by the comments. Okay? We're not going to mention any names. We're not going to mention any people. But what I will mention is some of the things that have gone on, that have just gone unanswered and just neglected to be addressed by this council. The driveways, that's something that we've talked about, that's something that's been investigated, that's something, what do you call it, when certain people get driveways and certain people don't? It should have been one area, one neighborhood got them, and not just my friend here, my friend there, my friend there. What happened there? It was stated in the newspaper that it was done randomly. What are the chances that you got one, you got one, and some other friends got? That it wasn't random. They were picked by District Four in his district. So that, I mean, that's a fact, in case you don't know what tranza is, when you do something that is not fair to everybody. That was not fair to everybody. And then we have people, attorneys. We have a perfectly good law firm. Why did we have to spend $100,000 in a California law firm? And once again, that's a tranza. I'm sure we have a competent attorney who is on, you know, on the staff here. Why did we have to go out of state, you know, with an attorney from a school district to represent us? And where did that leave us? We're in mediation now. Anybody could have gotten us into mediation. Any first-year lawyer could have done that. Why do we have to spend that kind of money? That's a tranza, when you spend people's money foolishly, tranza. You know, and, uh, let's see, what are some of the other ones? Our community center in my district, we had three bids. One over half the amount of the bid that was taken, because they did not make $1,000 on there, it got thrown out. That's $300,000 the city could have saved. How much would have that looked on our budget as of revenue? I would have saved $300,000, but we gave it to one contractor. Why? Tranza, pure and simple, pure and simple. We have, we had our police consultant who was brought in, but he didn't do what was thought to be right, so he was taken out.
Mr. Duran? Our next speaker is Daniel Fresquez.
Did I pronounce that right? Yeah, three minutes, sir. Daniel Fresquez, and I'm not sure if I'm in the right order. I want to talk about festivals and events. Is this the right time?
Was it a specific item on the agenda, or did you just want to have it in general?
It was in general. I wanted to bring it up.
Right times, right times.
Okay. I am here as a citizen of Socorro, resident of Socorro, and a member of the El Paso Mission Trail Association, a board member, a member. Just returned from 38 years in California, so this is a rattle awakening. But anyway, I have just one simple question, a preface, I have a little bit of information, but I want to direct a simple question to Mr. Gander, and I'd like to know if you would answer it. Can you answer it, a simple question?
Public comments are for the community, not for councilmembers, so we take your input, and you have three minutes to give us your opinion.
But do I ever get an answer at any point?
You're welcome to visit me at the office. We're open to giving you a call, coming by the meeting.
Okay, good. I'll take care of that. But anyway, since I'm new here, and I'm here totally in a, not, in a mode of inquiry, strictly, without any confidential issue at all. The preface and remarks are that, since I got here, there have been, like, seven festivals in San Luis Obispo. San Luis Obispo, I understand, is about, what, one-fourth of the size of Socorro? And none that I know of in Socorro. No festivals in Socorro. Seven, eight, it's going to be eight in September in San Luis Obispo. So my question to you all is, why? Why no festivals here? I was really sad to come back to Socorro and find that not much has changed, and there's no community spirit. And my preface and remarks also are that we, apparently, other members of the Mission Trail Association tried really hard to get a sponsorship to use the park. Now, I was really surprised. I didn't realize that you had to be sponsored to use a public park. How did that happen? I mean, that's really, really strange, that the people would have to get you guys authorization and approval to use a public park for an event. I don't understand that. I wish I could...
I guess I can, sir. So, why no events? Our next speaker is Mr. Kathy Apodaca. Ms. Apodaca, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council members, and members of the official. My name is Kathy Apodaca. I too am here on behalf of El Paso Mission Trail Association. And if y'all aren't familiar with what El Paso Mission Trail Association does, it's to preserve, to educate, and promote the mission trail, which is a nine-mile corridor between Isleta and San Luis Obispo. In April, I requested from my representative permission to come before you as a council, be placed on the agenda, to request permission for the park for an event the mission trail was going to promote. And two months later, after not receiving a response, I was told that that person could no longer sponsor me. And when I asked why, they said, "Because no one else would sign off on it." Now, all I asked for was to come before you to present my request, which I have done in the past, and whether or not it was approved was up to you as the council. And it was just kind of, I would say, disappointing, because, again, like I said, it is our purpose to promote not only Isleta and San Luis Obispo, but Socorro too. I personally am a resident of Socorro. I have lived here for over 30 years. I'm very proud of the history that we have here. And in order to promote that with the rest of the city of El Paso, we have to have an event to do that. I think in the future that you might give consideration, because do remember that all of you have to vote on whatever is being requested of you. Everyone should have the right to come before you to request that. It's still a duty to whether or not you want to hold that. So all I ask is in the future, give them sincere consideration to people that want to do things here in Socorro. If you feel it's not the right thing to do, then you'll have your time when that person comes before you, and you can deny that request. But it is sad to see that things don't happen here, like they happened in San Luis Obispo and again, Isleta, because we are a park. We're the middle section of the corridor. People should be more familiar with us than anybody else. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Juan Castañeda. Castañeda, you have three minutes.
I'd like to do the thank you to everybody here that belongs to Socorro, because like I tell you before, I consider myself one of the proud Socorro citizens. Most of the people there are doing a great job for this community, because, like I tell you, we are grownups. And we are the people working for us, except for some time in cycle. I've been having, I've been having six points in mind, when I've been having problems with the neighbors, with a lot of pressure around, and they haven't done anything about it. I've been taking side of the line to assist the support of this side of my house, and this is a residential, it's not a community. Like I tell you, the people are working on it. They're, that is true. My lady Gloria is very, very good. They do a good job for us, but we cannot please everybody. And I'm one of the proud citizens of Socorro. Whenever I can help somebody, I just, we found that, if I, if I'm here, so, or, if I was, when I was a captain, I was here, but it's not Socorro. I believe he fought, for, for his life. And I consider myself a citizen of Socorro, and I'm proud of everybody, without a doubt. But we need to work together to base Socorro, to grow up Socorro. Like I tell you, I'm proud of it. For these people here, they've been doing a great job, but I can tell you, we cannot please everybody. In my side, I give thanks for everything we've been doing for us. I live in District One, and I just want to get to go survive through it. Professor, because I did some reform there, and I will call it survival, there, and there's my goal, I don't know what to do. I need some help to, my family. I really thanks and I'm proud of all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Castañeda.
Our next speaker is Mr. Victor Garcia. Victor Garcia? We have a gentleman that didn't sign up for anything, Sergio Jaime.
Did, wait, he didn't?
He didn't specify what he wants to speak. Was it for public comments, sir?
Can you, Mr.? Can you bring the paper? Mr. Jaime, you're not signed in on the floor, and therefore, that's why you're not going to be able to speak, guys. Thank you. You're not signed in.
I have no minutes.
Thank you. No, 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 no. Thank you, Mr. Jaime. Council, did, did you want to say anything?
Yes, I do. It's so difficult sometimes, some people, they come and they say, "You don't respect us, you don't look at us, how we're talking." For me, I, or I'm writing certain comments on what they say. And then, again, on another, I would be saying, "Well, all you do is look at us and don't do anything." So what is it, will we look at you, or don't we look at you? Either way, people are not pleased by it sometimes. And it's so difficult sometimes, that people are out there misinforming their community about some time. That's all they do. They just misinform.
They inform us.
Mr. Fresquez?
Hi.
Gloria Rodriguez, please. Mr. Fresquez, please. We should please this way, guys. We don't allow outbursts of opinions. Mr. Fresquez?
That's just a question. Wait.
Thank you, Victor.
I have to leave, because we're asking a simple question out loud. I can be public. I'm very, I've come to a communist country. I hate...
Ms. Reyes? Yeah, I just want to say, regardless of whether they agree with you or they don't agree with you, and everybody has a different opinion, and they're entitled to it. They are constituents, and they do have that right. Maybe some have forgotten the fact that the council works for the people. People don't work for the council. So you have to understand that they have concerns, and that's why they come to these meetings. But it's a lot of times, a lot of comments are made that are not favorable, and they get discouraged. And that shouldn't be, because they are constituents, and they do have that right.
Thank you, Mr. Fresquez. Again, everybody remembers the past. Everybody remembers, you know, the Russian council members on the other, and that was a year ago, before this new council was in place. We don't do that anymore. We don't allow outbursts, you know, from the audience, and for the council members to yell back. And this council has decided that this city has grown, you know, we're now professionals. Though, that type of dialogue is meant for the playground. It's not meant for real discourses happening. A lot of the people that got up here, you know, one of the speakers, he's on YouTube saying, saying, "It doesn't matter whether I feel the truth or lie, it's my, it's my, I can say whatever I want, the truth has no preference." I mean, those are the speakers who got us here, mentioning supposed fact after fact after fact of tranzas. You know, stuff from California, we're very mediation, but yet he doesn't, he doesn't say that in district courts, we prevail over the horizon of, for once, the city of Socorro beat another government entity. And that is the reason that we are now mediation, is because they now, having lost and going on to appeal, are looking to settle with the city of Socorro, who for the first time has prevailed against another government entity and stood our ground. I'm very proud of this council, no longer backs down to any other entity. We are a good city, we have our own priorities, and we conduct ourselves professionally. There have been no festivals in Socorro. Well, anybody who's lived here knows that that's just not true. I mean, most recently, we have the Easter egg celebration at the park. We had the construction kickoffs for our new facilities. We've had bike rounds that end in festivals. We've had lots of festivals in the past year. And if somebody gets up here and again, just, no regard for that, just says, "We've had no festivals in Socorro." I want the council to know that, you know, we were attacked for not allowing them to have something at a park. Well, we do allow individuals to be at a park, though when you're going to use a facility, you have to get the government agencies authorization, just like they do at the county. And for this council's information, our county commissioner, Willie Gavilla Jr., sponsored this past Monday the Chile Core Festival. They had to put it on the agenda, the government agency had to approve it, just like in the same, you know, the way that we do things in Socorro. And it got passed this Monday to the county commissioner, to have it signed. But again, somebody gets up there and says, you know, "This is unheard of, you know, that you would make somebody come before the council and act last for permission." Again, that's just not true. Every government agency does that. You know, we talked about, there's just so much disinformation, but, you know, these are, we see these, there may be some new faces here, and we see a lot of these same faces, council after council, every, every other week, and it's, it's the same people that stood up at that podium and told this council, "You're making a mistake for recalling Willie Gavilla Senior, don't do it." And then when he lost his election, now they got, now they got beat to the right with us. You know, one of them's the, the ex-judge, you know, who was escorted out, who we didn't, we didn't renew his contract. So of course, there's personal vendettas and this, but, I mean, they show up here and it's just the same card, but I had six, in the past three months, I had six neighborhood meetings. I've met with about 100 constituents, and they're all excited about the projects that are happening. You know, and then you get the one, and there's only one in my district, so, you know, when, when one person says, "We're your community, represent this reform." And there was only one person here who spoke against the stuff we've been doing, and they're not the community, because I'm out there having meetings with the community. So it's, it's just a shame.
And, yes, we do recognize that you come up once, and you have an opinion, and you're entitled to your things, and we never saw you, no, 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 say that. But, and it's the same people, the same people that call the media, so they come over here, and they just, you know, take whatever, it's made in Socorro, and they go it out. This is the same group that tried to recall us from our positions, and they tried to promote us to the light, and we're lying to the people of Socorro to get those signatures. And we have had documents. So these people are very negative. They don't see anything that's good that's happening in the city of Socorro. They just like to say, and then, most of the time, waste the food. And they're out there, you know, tonight, we're going to see it, we're going to say, "Oh, Socorro, they spent, we are, there's not going to be anything positive of what we have said to this people." It's mainly just negative, they are very negative. And I don't understand English, but it's a support, because that's what they've been doing for, for the union. Hopefully, and I know that there's a lot of smart people here in Socorro, they don't, there are nothing to say.
Ms. Reyes, Commissioner.
Okay, it seems that if it's something that does not appeal to you, it's boring. Also, I don't think 700 plus more people were wrong when they had the signature on their card, because that's all good. And also, when we didn't get the festival here, it was not lack of trying, it was just because they refused to accept the second signature on trying to get one of the festivals here. So the attempt was there, it was denied, and the sponsorship was taken from them. So that is true, because I had requested to be the second signature, and it was not accepted. So there are a lot of things out there that they are entitled to talk about. There are a lot of things that people will not accept, and not like. This council does a lot of things. A lot of the people don't like our things, but it's an opinion, and everybody is entitled to one. And they do have concerns, they are constituents, and it's our job to listen to them.
I don't disagree with you.
Mayor, may I say?
No, it's not bad.
No?
Mr. President?
Yeah, I should be the one that should be complaining the most, simply because of the fact that I was the one who did that. As was mentioned just now, some of the signatures were acquired, where they were part of the papers involved. When you, when you do it, you're involved, you do it, you got them up, and you do the nice manner, you don't commit fraud just because you want to be a person act. So, like I said, I was thinking, you know, think now, if the system works right, it's just a system. You don't, you don't remove a person by fraud. You remove a person by presenting the fact. So when this is brought up, so 700 signatures or more, that's why we moved on, because it's a project. So yes, I was thinking, I should be the one to complain about it. But I'm not, because I feel just as the mayor expressed himself, councilmembers, they will work for the city, they will work for you. We're doing a lot of projects that benefit the city, not just a small part of the city, but everywhere. And you can see it, it walk around the city. But... But it hurts me to hear these complaints of the same people, both for the home or the mortgage, where they bring the media, people are showing. So they live in the open. So the city looks bad when we do that. And it's not for the betterment of the community, it's for the betterment of the small people. And it was expressed by the mayor, that part of the people were uninvolved. And it's a shame that we don't acknowledge that. We're trying to do work and this distracts the work. Those people are, well, people like that are constantly trying to bring the system down. We never had a system working as well as it's working now. We never had the project that we have now. I'm proud that it's a lower mountain and these projects will go on. You've got to bring up the city, you've got to make it better for our families. And hopefully, you can bring to mind that the system has been pressing a certain way so everybody benefits from the fruits of our labor. And that's basically what we're trying to do no more and no less. What do you think?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, do you want to?
Yeah, as far as the festivals, you know, we can't sponsor an item and can't get the second signature. That's their choice. That's people who are here. That's their choice. At some point, I was due from the issue because they don't, didn't make any money, any spend any longer to keep it on, looking for seven-six signature we weren't allowed to get. Has it ever been sent to a bringer before council? I could get the seven signature. And before you're doing that, maybe you'll answer your phone. I've got two phone calls and I'm just beginning because you won't answer your phone. Railbox is full, asking me for help with something to do. Shame on you. Oh, shame on you too.
Okay, the council, we've already all set our pen. I'd like to move on now. Do you have permission to the consent agenda, item seven, eight and nine?
Mayor, council, we would ask you to delete the motion at attention of nine at the request of the property owner.
Motion to delete number nine. And who goes to the consent?
Yeah, number nine.
A motion on the floor, seconded by Mary Garcia, to delete item number nine and approve the rest of the consent agenda. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez? Maria Reyes? I'm sorry? Yes? Consent agenda is approved with exception of number nine, which is the meeting.
We move on to the regular agenda introduction, first reading and calling for a public hearing under the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, formally establishing processes, procedures, rules and regulations, inauguration and administration of municipal court and city court. Council? This is just an introduction and calling for a public hearing for the community.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes? Ten is approved?
We move on to item number eleven, discussion and action to approve solicitation procedure, waive limits of Socorro purchasing policy and authorize these purchase contracts or contract to purchase equipment in the Socorro Recreation Center.
Who's the person?
Okay, time a person.
Okay, there's a... What's the person who would add to that? What was your question? Somebody here can answer this, myself.
I'm just wondering, why are we having to change the limit? Is that what the policy stipulates? That's what we need to abide by? Why are we giving, what is the amount that you're looking at that we're trying to approve in order to waive the limit?
It's not a limit as in an amount. It's just that our purchase, if I may, our purchasing policy, it... The amount that there was four falls over our policy limit, where we have to bid out for it, but still under the Texas limit.
Where did mine go?
It's fifty thousand for Texas, I believe?
Yes.
Fifty thousand.
So technically, this contract, this contract will be for less than fifty thousand dollars. And you're asking for it to be for approval, for approval without having to opt for the related terms, which is condoned by statute.
What type of contract are we looking at?
We're looking at a contract, what I've seen, the contract is for less than fifty thousand dollars. It's for the first year, it's a twenty-five thousand dollars contingent on the project. For the second year, it's the same amount, for twenty-five thousand dollars. And contingent on the third year, related to the budget, by initial, it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
What type of services are we looking at?
Type of services, Jumilipnet is for vending services such as video games, items for the recreation center. That's what Jumilipnet is. Maybe there's certain games that Jumilipnet or the Recreation Center can place in there. The items can be placed for the first year. If they're not being used, then we have an option to place other items in there that are equal value. For instance, if it's a softball game or some type of video game, we can replace with something of equivalent value. So everything can be generated related to that. If upon the second year, after the second year, if the items are being worn or not, if they're worn and no longer being used, they can also be switched out for other items to be used after recreation.
Did you a special motion for item number eleven or just a motion to approve?
Just to approve.
Just to approve would be fine.
And I would share, as the council said, we're within state law. One, two, we've received a number of options, some that I think are much better than the initial auction from the vendor. And so I'm trying to get to the best value for the city where over a period of years, we have just a couple sets, get to an equal value, better machine or one kids really like, get a second one for one that's not being used. If there's maintenance issues regarding, the vendor will take care of that, okay? And will be transparent to the city and our community to be able to use all the machines for free.
You're talking about arcade machines?
Arcade machines.
That was my next question. Do you want to know what it was?
Arcade machines, six of them.
Is it always going to be six?
Only going to be six.
And this is going to be the amount that will be paid out monthly, is it thirty-two?
No, that's what I'm saying to you. I'm now cutting much better, over, okay, as low as eighteen hundred dollars are all attached.
Not with this company?
With this same company.
Same company?
Yeah, I'm negotiating with them. So I'm finalizing that negotiation and all we need is your authorization to waive the policy and to authorize me to complete the negotiations.
And this is going to be an ongoing contract?
It'll be a two-year contract with an option for a third.
Okay, and then after the third year, are we still going to have that part?
A total new process.
Total new process?
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at, were there new leases?
New leases or purchases or, you know, we'll just explore all the options to see what's best value for the city.
We had a motion on the floor to approve by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia? Gloria Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes? Item number eleven is approved?
We move on to...
Item number sixteen.
Item sixteen, discussion and action on mayor pro tempus condition. Council, I put this on the agenda, actually, it's on the agenda about three weeks ago.